And then, and then, and join, that you're gonna join is not voting, right?
Wrong.
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 3rd meeting of the Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, if you would call roll, please.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Ms. Mies?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Oaks?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Horcker?
Here.
If you would, join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hearing of the citizens, is there anyone here tonight to speak to this board concerning any matters that aren't on our agenda?
There are two. Are there a couple that are signed up?
Kim Greer? Mrs. Greer, just a reminder, you'll be limited to three minutes for your remarks. Thank you.
All right. My name is Kim Greer, and I'm of the Tunstall District. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen of Pennsylvania County. I'm here to ask why it seems that citizens come here to speak and to be heard, but they are not. When we last came here to the Planning Commission in June, it was as if the decision had been made before we got here. When we first spoke out against the accident development, people told us that you're wasting your time. They said that the county was run by the good old boy system, and what you said mean nothing. Sadly, I have found that to be true. Some may say that this is because things didn't go your way, you didn't get your way with this, but that's not true. We simply didn't feel like we were represented from the very beginning. It was, this is what the developers want, and this is what we're gonna give them. And it was us fighting alone against big money, and money talks, and it drowns your voice out. Your voice should matter, not only at the ballot box, but when it is something that's going to affect you and your family and your neighbors greatly. There are not a lot of adjacent landowners to the accident development here in this fight with us anymore. But it's not because they support this as some people would have you to think. If they believe that everybody was on board with this the way they think, they should have put it on the ballot to be voted on. If the county is gonna be ruined, I think everybody ought to have a voice in that. A lot of those people feel like that they don't want to waste their breath and waste their time anymore. And I am respectfully asking you to prove those people wrong tonight. Tonight, when you vote, I want you to please stand for what is right, even if it means that you stand alone. Please do not pass for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Greer. Jane Kendrick?
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Jane Kendrick, I live at Braswell. So, we will come back to the other issue at a later time, but I did want to mention a couple of things. I was looking again at the Planning Commission's objective, its job, its responsibility, and it's a big one. It's one that I'm sure we don't want to take lightly. One of the things stated on the county website is that you have to worry about, you have to look into, you have to consider negative impacts on communities. And I want to tell you that what Mrs. Greer said is something that has nothing to do with property rights, landowner rights, what can or cannot be built. But it honestly stems back to, in our situation, to a meeting held in this room in June. And then a meeting held later on that this group, with the exception of Mr. Dalton, had nothing to do with because it was the Board of Supervisors. This country was founded by brave individuals who stood up for what they believed in. And that is what we have done. We have stood for what we believed in. We have fought, we have struggled against everything and every odd imaginable, trying to make our voices heard. I don't know if any of you were either here in the room or watched or went back and watched the last Board of Supervisors meeting, excuse me, the one where they passed the fiasco. This room was full of citizens, full. And many people stood up to this podium and they spoke. I talk. I talk all the time. I will talk anytime, anyplace. Most of those individuals will tell you this is out of their comfort zone. They talked their heart out, they made intelligent arguments, they made pointed arguments, and they were disregarded. You cannot ask citizens to keep coming to these meetings until there is a response to what citizens are saying. And so what I ask you tonight is to listen and to consider what people are bringing forth to you. That is what America was founded on. The Boston Tea Party, all the events leading up to the Revolution. That was conducted by people who had a passion and acted on what they believed in. And that's what our group has done all summer. So I respectfully just ask you to please listen this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes, I'm done.
David Willis?
I'm David Willis, I'm from the Tunstall District, and, um, it was a very sad thing, it's a very sad thing that's going on right now, and just like both of them said, a lot of people in this community have come and strived and strived and strived to get their point across and have their voices heard, and nobody cares. Nobody stood up here and said, "We want this, we want this," nobody. Nobody, except one. We know who that was, Mr. Ingram, he was the one that wanted it, but other than that, nobody in this county wanted this. Except the investors, except the investors and whoever else was involved, Mr. Ingram and whoever else. But my nightmare started on June the 5th, when I found out about this, when the Planning Committee meeting was on the 6th, and I found out about it. The RPD codes and everything on the 6th, right here in front of y'all, that's when I found out about it. And it's been a nightmare ever since, ever since. And I spent my whole summer, I had good plans this summer, I was gonna do some things, and my whole summer's been revolved around fighting this and trying to get people to hear what's happening. And everybody hears what's happening, they're not happy. Not happy at all, they're real outraged at what's happening. How can all people do this to our county? Let this happen. Dense populations of people being put like this. Two thousand people packed in less than three quarters of a square mile. And within one square mile, you've got two thousand people and a whole town. And this change in the codes will allow that to happen all over the place, all over this county, and change this whole county. And like the speakers before said, that people got up here and spoke and spoke and spoke. And eleven thousand, one thousand people signed a petition saying that they didn't want it. Nobody cared about that. Nobody stood up here and said, "We want this," except the investors and one other. And it was all based on the belief, and the reason they voted yes, we believe is because it was all on the belief that we need housing and something coming to the mega park. We don't need housing that bad. There's housing coming in on 86 and in Danville. Dense population, stuff like that, where it should be, not out in the middle of the county, you know? The county should be the county, and the city dense populations like that should be left in there. And what happened to this whole thing, Pennsylvania County is rated like sixty-five people per square mile. Sixty-five people per square mile. They won't put, they won't put six thousand people in less than a square mile. And they're talking about, like, compared to Windhurst or something like that? And Windhurst is almost in Lynchburg, right inside Lynchburg, and it's, I don't even know, I can't remember the numbers, but it's like five hundred houses considered to two thousand. But I don't want to waste everybody's time, but everybody knows what I'm getting at and what they're getting at. People are saddened that their voice is not being heard. And we just ask, does somebody please listen to what the people say instead of, "But, what revenue we need," or whatever, "housing" or whatever, because we don't need that? I'll thank you. Y'all have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else? At seven twelve, public hearing is closed. Approval of the agenda. Floor is open for a motion.
I make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Webb. Second by Ms. Mies.
That's fine, yes, second.
Please cast your vote. Motion carries six yes to zero no. Approval of the minutes. Floor is now open for a motion on the minutes.
I make a motion that will approve the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Mies. Is there a second?
I'll second her.
Second by Mrs. Henderson. Please cast your vote. Motion carries six yes to zero no. Chairman's report. I normally don't give one, but tonight I just wanted to give my thanks and compliments to the staff. I've been approached several times in the last six months about whether it's folks coming forward for a building permit or just to get a question answered about rezoning. And they always, they've been telling me they always get the help they need. And for the work that you guys do for this committee, for the Board of Supervisors, we thank you for getting us diligently prepared and having everything we need to do our job. So thank you. At seven fourteen, we are once again open for public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article Five, Division Seven of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At seven fifteen, case R-23-026 is now open for public hearing.
Case R-23-026, the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County, Virginia, has petitioned to rezone thirty-two point two-six acres located on U.S. Highway 29 in the Chatham-Blair's election district from A-1 Agricultural District to M-2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow for a public facility, a correctional facility. Once the property is rezoned to M-2, all uses listed under Section Thirty-five dash four-zero-two are permitted. The staff's summaries and close in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Dave Arnold is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Arnold?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. I've just got a few slides to share with you all to give you all an overview of the purpose behind this rezoning application. And let me just make sure the little clicker is... Turn it on. There we go. Ah, there we go. All right, thank you all. So, as Ms. Ragsdill just stated, the county and the Board of Supervisors are applying to rezone the subject parcel, which is thirty-two acres, currently located across the street from the Pet Center, from A-1 to M-2, to allow a public facility, which in this case is going to be a correctional facility or jail, to be constructed as a permitted or by right use. The Board of Supervisors actually purchased this property just over a month ago at the end of August. I'm sure many of you all are already aware that the county's current jail is pretty much run its course. It was constructed in nineteen eighty-one, so it's around forty-two years old. And the capacity at the time construction was completed, it was for thirty-six inmates. I've heard from Sheriff Taylor and others who have worked in the jail or been affiliated with it since it was constructed that it was over capacity from day one. And right now, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty-two percent of capacity. And overflow inmates are frequently housed at one of the Blue Ridge Regional Jail facilities locations in either Amherst County, or there's several others just north of us in central Virginia. One of the issues aside from overcrowding and overpopulation, as far as the need for the new jail, is the aging infrastructure, particularly the heating and cooling systems. There's a hefty amount of maintenance that must, hefty maintenance budget that's required every year to keep this facility operational. So, here we are. The first step in this exercise is to pursue the completion of a community-based corrections plan, which we actually have a member of our consulting, consultant team with us, Mr. Tony Bell from Mosley Architects, who, along with Sheriff Taylor. If I can't answer questions, we've got folks who certainly can, should you have any. But one of the first things we needed to do is find a suitable location for this facility. And that's where we thoroughly evaluated the subject property there on Highway 29 South. And not only is it very accessible, it's got access to a major U.S. highway, centrally located in the, pretty much the center of the county, only minutes' drive from the courthouse. It also has available water and sewer utilities. It's compatible with other existing land uses that are commercial and industrial, adjacent to this particular property. And then just the sheer size of this property makes it a great candidate for a jail. Not only can it house a jail and all the parking and everything that it requires, but it also has additional space should the county wish to construct another facility or use it for another purpose down the road. So just to highlight some of the key characteristics of the site plan. One, the facility currently is looking to be around ninety-one thousand square feet, and it's gonna house one-hundred-and-forty-six, it's gonna have one-hundred-and-forty-six beds, which is capable of housing one-hundred-and-forty-six inmates or detainees. However, we're gonna build it with a core that will be capable of expanding to two-hundred-two beds should the demand arise in the future for additional inmates or detainees to be housed at this facility. So essentially, it's gonna be scalable. It's also gonna be set back from U.S. Highway 29 a considerable amount. According to the conceptual plan, it's looking at about approximately, or just over, nine-hundred feet from U.S. Highway 29. So it's gonna have limited visibility. It's not gonna be a very imposing, have a very imposing presence along the U.S. 29 corridor. A couple other key things to note, there's gonna be a firewater tank on-site. And it's gonna be about fifty to seventy feet above ground. And however, the actual facility itself, the jail itself, will only be about twenty feet tall above ground. You're not gonna see the fencing that most people are used to seeing in the movies and everything like that associated with the more traditional jail that was built, you know, decades ago. You're not gonna, it will have fencing, but it won't be visible from the front of the building. And let's see, as I mentioned earlier, there's gonna be ample space on this property for potential other uses in the future. And the other key point I'll mention about the site plan, and this is based on conversations we've already had with VDOT, is while there won't be the need for a traffic impact analysis because of the number of anticipated extra vehicles traveling as a result of this development will not be over, I believe it's five thousand a day is the threshold that they have. They do see the need to have a right turn lane and a taper. We've already got a ability to cut, a median cut right there, as you can see in the site plan, as you enter the driveway or entrance, access road into the facility. So there's pretty much just a rendering, a little less technical drawing, of what the facility will look like based upon what's been planned and designed to date. So to give you all a better perspective of what this new jail will look like, here are six different images of comparable facilities constructed mostly in Virginia, but I believe one or two of these may also be out of the state. But if you look at them, they don't, they don't look like your grandparents' jail, you know? They look more like a school or something along those lines, I would say. We also, county staff, as well as the Board of Supervisors, have been working diligently. Once this project got underway and we started to hone in on the site for the facility, we've been conducting outreach in various ways. One was back in July, Sheriff Taylor and County Attorney Hunt presented to the school board during current, closed session, rather, on the county's plans to acquire this property and construct a jail there. Because we recognize it is, you know, right there close to the vocational center, the VOTEC center, as well as Chatham Middle School there on 29. They, we, they basically were just in favor of having like a frequently asked questions website and things like that to ensure that the community was well informed about this project. We also sent certified letters from the county administration office to adjacent property owners. And we've heard back, I believe, five out of the six or somewhere thereabouts were received. However, we have yet to receive any calls or inquiries from those adjacent property owners. This was done in addition to the letters that are mailed out by the Community Development Office, as they do for any upcoming public hearing. And lastly, at the recommendation and request of the school board, and county staff, as well as our board agrees, we need to have a central hub of information, which was done so in the form of a project webpage available on the county's website. This was launched on September twentieth, the same time that a press release and social media post, as well as the public hearing... post, as well as the public hearing notice, was advertised in the local newspaper. I've pretty much covered everything, other than just want to share with you all the project timeline. As I mentioned, one of the first things we need to do in order to receive some state financial assistance or funding, which could be up to 25% of the project's construction cost, is submit a community-based corrections plan, or CBCP, by the end of this year. Those plans are only submitted once a year. So we need to get that to, I believe it's the Board of Local and Regional Jails by year's end. And that requires us to already have a site in hand, have chosen a site, and also have confirmed the appropriate size of the facility. So that is well underway, and all the necessary documentation is being compiled and assembled by our consultants. I'm going to go line by line, other than if you click on the next slide, as far as the timeline goes, a lot of this stuff just has to go through legislative approval. And that's going to take us about a year and a half after the CBCP is submitted. So we're looking at being able to award the architecture and engineering contract and the design notice to proceed approximately in June of 2025. And then the last thing, once the design is complete, then construction gets underway. And right now, this is looking to be constructed and available for occupancy by the end of 2000... or 2027, so roughly November 2027. So that pretty much recaps what was probably already in your packet. I apologize for the redundancy, but just wanted to make myself, as well as Mr. Bell with Mosley Architects, as well as Sheriff Taylor, available for any questions you all might have.
Any questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Could you tell us more about security? That seems to be what I've heard, just within crowds, not directly to me, because of the school out there. But I reminded them of how many schools are right here in Chatham with the present jail. So, but tell us what the security and how it's going to be set up. I know it's going to be high technology, I can imagine.
Right. Exactly. So today's jail, you know, security is also greatly enhanced from decades ago. No longer do you see the, you know, the guard towers clearly visible. So we're going to rely heavily on security. There will be... the recreational areas are going to be secured, and all that's going to be located more at the back of the facility. As far as when inmates or detainees might be released, that's been one thing people have been concerned about. So we're going to require that they have a relative or friend pick up the inmate or detainee upon release. If they're not available, Sheriff Taylor has stated that a courtesy ride will be provided so that they're located to an area that catching a ride with somebody would be more feasible than as opposed to right there on U.S. Highway 29. Now, I also want to say, I'm very... I'm glad you asked that question. I'm also glad you asked that question in the company of Sheriff Taylor and Tony Bell. So Sheriff Taylor, would you mind adding to any of the security considerations that will be applied to this new facility? Because that is not my area of expertise.
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. On the matter of security, of course, the new facility will have the latest technologies in release, the interworkings, and I don't want to get too deep into the security aspects of it for the reasons thereof, but I can assure you, it is much more secure than what we have today.
Oh, yeah.
And again, I think it's been noted that where the jail sits now, we are in a really populated, in a high-traffic area, and we've experienced very few issues in our jail over the years, thankfully. We have had escapes, but they've been from the lack of being able to get into the Sallyport in our local jail. And thankfully, the inmate was captured pretty quickly. But we have had, in the years past, we've had people to escape. It's not to say that we wouldn't have escape attempts at this jail, because you have to remember, they are detainees. And so we treat them as such with respect, but we also employ the latest security measures. And with those measures, it will really enhance the ability of the employees and the safety of those who work inside, and the safety of the other detainees as well. I hope that answered your question, Ms. Meese.
I was going to include employees as well. I mean, it's to protect them as well. Well said.
And I didn't share any pictures of the inside, of what that may look like, but Sheriff obviously has it, just the architecture, there's, you know, a lot of science that goes into, you know, where you have like controls and where you have guards and everybody that can be located to get clear line of sight of all the inmates and things like that. So building controls, you know, appropriate best practices related to interior design and things like that will be in place. So, yeah, I... I mean, that's obviously everybody's first concern when it comes to a jail. And I think that that's why we're at a point to where we can ensure that this is done to today's best practices to ensure the safety of our community and those around it.
And I'm also, correct me if I'm wrong, but the state determines the standards, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Not to count it, but the state controls what...
Yes, ma'am.
...explays there.
The Department of Corrections and Department of Criminal Justice Services. And it's also based, the manpower and the staffing study is based on the number of bed spaces. So we will have additional manpower paid by the Compensation Board to help maintain the safety and security of the facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Arnold or Sheriff Taylor?
I don't have a question. I've got a letter from Mr. Waters.
Okay. Hold that just for one minute. Did you have a question, Glenn? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you both for coming. I have a comment and a question. First of all, thank you so much. This is near and dear to my heart. My background is in corrections, 12 years, and my husband, I'm retired, and that and he is as well. So this is phenomenal for our county. Thank you. As far as employment is concerned, because this is always a question that we get, what would the projection be for new hires for this project?
Well, the staffing method is based on one deputy per three beds. And if we overpopulate at some point, and I hope we don't do that, but if we overpopulate, they will give us one emergency custody position for one deputy per five additional bed spaces.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that. That's always an interest and a draw.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Waters couldn't be here tonight. He asked us to read this letter for him. It said, "Good evening to all. Since I'm unable to attend the October the 3 meeting of the Planning Commission, I would like to share with everyone my views concerning the rezoning case R-23-026 submitted by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County. After discussions with some of the Board of Supervisors, it is my understanding that Pennsylvania County must provide a county with adequate jailing facilities to meet the needs of our county. The current jail built in 1981 has long needed updating, but in its current location, there is no room for expansion. To meet the obligation of providing the facility needed for Pennsylvania County, the Board of Supervisors purchased 32.26 acres located at 11965 U.S. Highway 29 North. The Board of Supervisors submitted a rezoning application which calls for the property to be rezoned from the Agricultural District A1 to Heavy Manufacturing M2 to allow for the public facility, which will serve as the new jail. The Board of Supervisors has spoken with the Pennsylvania County School Superintendent, and our local law enforcement, and both have given their support in this location for the new state-of-the-art jail. The property is centrally located in the county and is in commercial and industrial area, which fits with county's comprehensive plan. The project must be approved by several state agencies to go before the General Assembly and finally be approved by the governor. The tentative construction line to begin is August 26th. Construction completion expected to be November 27." As the Chatham-Blairs representative for the Planning Commission, I am in support of case R-23-026 submitted by the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors to rezon 32.26 acres located U.S. Highway 29 North from Agriculture A1 to Heavy Manufacturing M2.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I didn't have anyone else signed up to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this case? At 7:35, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Webb.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve case R-23-026 to the Board of Supervisors to rezon from A1 to M2 the proposal.
Motion by Mr. Webb is our second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Motion passes, six yes to zero no. At 7:36, case R-23-027 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-027, Connie Horstley has petitioned to rezon 43 acres located on Permanente Baptist Road West in the Tonstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District and A1 Agricultural District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of a double-wide mobile home. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff's summary closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman Alexis Brodenax is here to represent the petition.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Ms. Horstley's agent. I work for Clayton Homes. Ms. Horstley has lived at her property for over 25 years in her mobile home that she has now, and is looking to replace that home with a double-wide. And, you know, upon trying to do so, we found out that part of her property, which is over 40 acres, is zoned not agricultural but residential. And we are looking to get the entire property zoned agricultural so she can finish her project.
All right. All right. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Thank you so much. No one has signed up to speak for or against this case. Is there someone here? At 7:38, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-23-027, I make a motion that we change the zoning from A1 and R1 to A1 to allow for a double-wide.
Motion by Mr. Oaks is our second.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Meese. Please cast your votes. Motion to rezon passes, six yes, zero no. At 7:39, case S-23-012 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-23-012, Southside Investing LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on 313.72 acres located on U.S. Highway 58, Martinsville Highway, in the Tonstall Election District for commercial uses such as a grocery-anchored shopping center, restaurants, offices, assisted living/dementia care facility, and a hotel for service to the residents of the planned area and adjacent communities. The staff's summary closing the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Southside Investing LLC is here to represent the petition.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Thomas Gallagher. I'm here on behalf of Southside Investing, the partners and those holding the financial interests of which are Todd Curtis, Dale Harris, Tony Sal, and myself. We're before you with respect to the special use permits for the Axon Project, including, as Ms. Ragsdale just referenced, a grocery-anchored shopping center, restaurants, potentially some office uses comprising about 180,000 square feet, an assisted living facility, which we've identified as about 100 beds, and a hotel between 125 and 150 rooms. From a mixed-use standpoint, these SUPs are critical for the development. When we rezoned, we didn't rezon to residential, we rezoned to the RPD, which contemplates the mix of uses. And at the end of the day, not only for the project, for the entire community, it would be beneficial with respect to the grocery store. Additionally, one of the other benefits with having the commercial within the project, the development, is there actually is a benefit from a traffic standpoint for... so all the residents who live within the community that can take advantage of the shopping center do not have to travel out on the road. So, and VDOT actually gives you about a 15% reduction on the trip generation. From a... benefits additionally from a job creation standpoint, both with respect to the shopping center, assisted living, and a hotel, construction jobs, we're estimating over the course of the construction, there'll probably be about 400 jobs constructing between the assisted living facility, the shopping center, and the hotel. And permanent, long-term jobs, right around probably about 290, with a couple caveats. Shopping center, about 150 employees, the assisted living, about 100, although they would be broken up probably about 50% full-time and 50% part-time. And then on the hotel, about 100 construction jobs, and then 40 long-term permanent jobs. The overall benefits to the county include increased tax revenue based on property taxes, sales tax, personal property tax, and occupancy tax, which is critical on the hotel front. In terms of property tax, just to give a placeholder, for the shopping center, budgeting about, you know, $45 million construction and value, that'd be equal at the current tax rate to about $279,000 a year in additional real estate taxes for that shopping center. I'll finish up. From a timing standpoint, as I said earlier, not only is the mix of use is critical for the RPD and what we put forward, but from a timing standpoint, getting these approvals done now is critical because we've had conversations with grocery stores and hotels, and the general answer has been, come back to us when you've got the approvals in place. Not only that, it's critical for us to mesh the two together because from a design standpoint, it's hard for us to design some components, including the hotel and the shopping center, especially the grocery store, without having the input from those tenants. From a... we've, at the outset, we said this is probably about a 10-year project in terms of these commercial uses. Our expectation is we have about 12 to 18 months of design and permitting work that we have to complete. So we're probably looking that we'd be turning dirt sometime in the middle of June, you know, June of '25. And then from a construction standpoint, you know, it will be ongoing. But in terms of the commercial uses, we're right now targeting the residential, which is, obviously, there's a huge need for residential right now in terms of the first thing that we'd be working on. And then the shopping center and the other components would come on after that. Exactly when, I don't know. But I wouldn't expect to see the commercial uses coming online before, you know, two years, two and a half years at the earliest. And hopefully, it will be the grocery-anchored shopping center. We are... we've reviewed the six conditions that staff has recommended be... go with the... any approval. And we agree, obviously, with staff's recommendation. We request your approval this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Gallagher? You've read and understand the conditions that staff is recommending.
Yes, we've been through them. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Michael Kendrick.
Good evening, Chairman and board members. I appreciate the privilege to speak here tonight. I appreciate the privilege to speak here tonight. I live in the Tunstall District. This development's going to affect us greatly. Heard a lot of glowing accolades for this project, what it's going to bring to county, what it's going to do for everybody. But I'm here to say there's going to be a lot of cost to it. It's going to, it's going to cost the county something also, okay? It's going to cost the community that's being put in. It's going to change their life forever, okay? A drastic change, in my opinion. We were led to believe that nothing else would be moving forward with this project until highway study was done and a DEQ study was done. And all of a sudden, a couple weeks ago, I was reading the paper that they're moving forward with asking for these special use permits. And I'm not going to take a lot of your time tonight, I'm just going to respectfully ask that you hold off on granting these special use permits at this time until these other studies are done. I think the other studies need to be done before we move forward issuing special use permits. Thank you.
Kim Greer.
As I have said before, none of the adjacent landowners are here tonight. A lot of them are simply tired of the fight, and we are, we were told in September by the Board of Supervisors that when the subject came up about the hotel and the other businesses coming, that we would be able to at that time speak out against it, and so that's why we're here. I am here tonight to respectfully ask you not to approve the request for Southside Investors to receive a special use permit at this time. Southside Investors have come to our county and got just about everything they asked for. Codes have been changed to fit what kind of city they want to build here in our county. Please ask them to wait until all environmental and VDOT studies are completed. This way, they will know what they can and cannot build. I am not an adjacent landowner at this time, but I do live on Martin Drive and have always been concerned about the traffic that this will bring. And I, for one, would like to know what VDOT has to say about this before Southside starts getting the green light to start building the homes, businesses, and hotel. We do not want a hotel in our rural neighborhood. And with all the crime that comes with a hotel and the different businesses, I was glad to hear that they're going to build a new jail because they're going to need it with as many people that's going to be living down there. One question I have is, what is the rush? Why are they in such a hurry? It was just approved in September, a Board of Supervisors meeting, and now jumping right into this before studies are done. He even said that they may not even get to this for years down the road. Why do they need the permit now? I mean, the main thing is for the studies to be done to make sure of what they can and cannot do. Please tonight tell them to wait for the studies to be done and completed before they can pass and have this approved. Nothing will hurt to wait. I mean, they have the time. Nothing will hurt them to wait. It's no, they've already been approved to do this, so, I mean, waiting on a special use permit until those studies are done wouldn't hurt a thing. And just one other thing, I don't know why now they're focusing on the jobs this would bring, because the main drive for this was the megapark. The people living in the megapark, they were going to get jobs there, needed somewhere to live, so that's why we needed to build all these homes down here. So it just doesn't make any sense to me to now bring up how many jobs it's going to bring when, you know, it's supposed to be for people that are coming to work at the megapark. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jane Kendrick.
Planning Commission website, ensure that any negative impact can be mitigated. You cannot ensure with a vote to approve a special use permit that there will be no negative impacts, nor can you say with 100% certainty that there is a plan by Southside or the Planning Commission or anyone else to mitigate those negative circumstances because there are no studies. I noticed something interesting when Mr. Arnold was speaking. They have a drawing, they have a site plan. VDOT has already told them what they need. They sent out extra letters. The letters that were sent out by Community Development, some of those returned, some of them, well, all of them are written in English, and they went to non-English speaking citizens, and that was really a problem. Mr. Arnold also said there was a project webpage available since September 20th. I want to just point out again, even though I've pointed out numerous times, there is a process in place with the Berkeley Group to revise all of the zoning ordinances. This one project was given a hop, skip, and jump over the process that our county had in place. And so now, we are faced with the idea that the prospect that they're going to give, be given a green light with these special use permits. Mr. Gallagher is someone who I've gotten to know and I like personally, but without these reports from VDOT, they can just go to a grocery chain, they can go to a hotel, they can go anywhere and say, hey, we're ready to go. Just let us get this dirt ready to turn, and you can just move right in. And as Ms. Greer said, they talking about jobs all of a sudden and lessen the traffic. How many of y'all really and truly think that people in that one little community are just going to go to that grocery store and nowhere else? Come on. It doesn't work that way. It just does not. That's why when you go to areas like Myrtle Beach and all, people are always up and down the road. That's what we're going to have, traffic and congestion. They need to have the VDOT studies completed, the DEQ studies completed, all those environmental studies. Those need to be completed before they should be given a green light. That is what is, I believe, what the, our zoning code calls for, and I think that is what is prudent, or else we are just giving them a green light to go blindly into the future. And unfortunately, it's my future, it's the future of my grandchildren who live right there, who will be impacted. The cost is going to be astronomical to this county. So I ask you tonight to do the prudent thing and put this vote to a future date. It does not belong tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. David Willis.
David Willis from, David Willis from the Tunstall District, and basically, I have nothing really to say but agree with everything she said, that I believe and everyone believes and feels that all the proper procedures and channels need to be taken care of before anybody authorizes something two years down the road when they already have, they already have the green light to do, build a city or whatever, but they're saying it's going to be a couple years down the road and, like he, like both of those people said, the environmental studies haven't been done, traffic studies haven't been done. And he did, when he was talking about people, be less traffic because of the shopping center, the way I see it, it'd actually be more because people be coming from other areas to the shopping center, you know? And then you're having kids running out from behind there, the 6,000 people that are there, they're running up and down the street. And then, like I say, people are coming to the shopping center, and then people going from the neighborhood to the shopping center, but that don't matter as far as 58, but, and that, that area down there is like a washbowl. It floods down there, it's like a floodplain. Every time it rains hard for a day or two, it floods down there. And it's been talked about and discussed before, so the environment, they need to have an environmental study done before they decide to get the green light to build an entire city down there that floods when it rains. So we got to have the water studies, traffic studies, all of that, and they're talking about building it two years from now. So what is the rush of doing it now? There is no rush. And I just ask, like Ms. Kendrick and everyone else, just hold off on this until it's time for it to happen. There's no use voting on it now when those studies have been done. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kenneth Woodward.
Yeah, I appreciate y'all letting me come out and speak tonight. I kind of got late involved in this. I really didn't know what all was going on, and I was very open-minded, so I went to some of the meetings to see exactly what was going to be discussed and talked about. And I sat back and I watched, and I basically seen something that kind of reminds me of a dictator talking to the people. And somebody that was really set on determining that they were going to have something passed even though the people were standing up and speaking against it. So I'm still kind of open-minded, so I'm thinking about this, and I realize what it would mean to the county to have something like this. I understand how important it would be to the county to have something like this. But what I want y'all to think about, and I know y'all go to the forums where they, people get up, where they want to talk about themselves and be elected. Chamber of Commerce are sponsoring them, and after all the people get up and talk, the chamber gets up and talks. And they explain what the duty is that those elected officials are supposed to do. And it didn't say, go against the people if you think the people are wrong. It didn't say that. It said to find out what the constituents want. And I went out and found out myself. I went out and knocked on doors. I listened to the people, and I come there open-minded, and I have yet to talk to one person that said, yes, we want that in our community. Now, I live in the Tunstall District, but I'm almost 20 minutes away from it, so I go up there in that area to find out for myself, what does these people want? How does it make them feel that this happened? 6,000 people, and then maybe with all this commercial stuff coming in, it could be 2 or 3 more thousand people there. So what I'm saying is, when they say at the end of the forum for the candidates is, you must, you must listen to what the people have to say. I'm telling you that right now because that's the way it should be. And if the people can't control politics at the local level, and I know we fed up with it at the national level, but if they cannot get out and speak their mind and control what's going on in their district, and if that means you are appointed by a dictator, that doesn't mean you have to vote for what he wants. What that means is, you vote by what they say the candidate is supposed to do. Listen to the people. There were over 1,000 signatures, and people got up here and spoke till almost midnight against it. And the whole time, all I heard was Vic Ingram fighting against the people, saying this is what was going to happen. Now, I'm speaking for the 1,000 people that has given up because they know what has happened. Their word meant nothing. But I'm going to speak for them, and I'm going to speak for me. So I'm open-minded about it, and I understand that the county needs it, but I'm going to say, the people have spoke, and you have to vote with the people.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. Your time is expired. Anybody else that didn't sign up? Okay, I wonder if we could get Mr. Gallagher to come back up? I have a question. So I know you've heard the concerns of the citizens. I wish you would speak to the timing of this special use permit and explain to us how getting the special use permit now, why that's important.
Right, so I'll address a couple things in turn, but starting off with that, so as I mentioned earlier, from a, from a timing standpoint, right now where we are in the process, from getting the approval, so in the conversations with the grocery stores and the hotel operators, we need them on board as soon as possible. But until we get some approvals done and get in place, it's, it's, it's a, the conversation doesn't go anywhere. So that's one of the key elements. Overall, from a timing standpoint, somebody asked what the rush was, and here's one of the things I didn't mention earlier. So from a development/construction standpoint, if you look at the mega site right now, the mega site, obviously, there's been a lot of investment there, and it's, it's, it's pad-ready, not the entire site, it's pad-ready. So conceivably, within the next year, anybody comes and announces they can come there, it'll take them probably about a year to build, all right, which would put them, so if, if something happened in the beginning of next year, so the beginning of 2025, they could actually be open and operating. That's the other critical element from a timing standpoint, is ideally if someone's open at the mega site, we'd like to be selling houses or at least contracting for houses 90 days before that because all these people are coming in. So that all kind of combines in terms of creating the need to push things along now. The other thing I would say is in terms of the, from a traffic standpoint, so traffic came up, and just note that, obviously, condition number one references the traffic and that we, you know, we can't, prior to approval, first subdivision plan that had to be done, that is underway now. So Dewberry has been engaged on that, they're going through the process. And ultimately, on the traffic impact, you know, Mr. Willis referenced the green light, we don't have, from VDOT, we don't have a green light. And V, once that traffic analysis is fully complete, they go through it, they will be, they will be controlling the process in terms of how this builds out, when it builds out. We won't be able to get access permits going to 58 without VDOT sign-off. So I think that's another critical thing that people understand. In terms of, there are other references to DEQ and environmental studies, they're all going to be done. That is just not typical to do that before you're, that's part, I can't get my stormwater permit until I'm fully, I go through the process with DEQ. So all that stuff will be addressed, it's not done on the front end, if that makes, does that answer your question?
Yes. Just looking at condition number one, the traffic study, so, in other words, you don't have a green light at any time. If the traffic study has to be changed, or, in other words, the project could, could have a hurdle there, correct?
Absolutely.
Also with DEQ, and ultimately would be a red light for the county.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, so, and, and we've mentioned this before, this, I mean, we're proceeding at our own risk, because at the end of the day, if through the traffic study, VDOT says, hey, you can only handle so much without, we're going to have some off-site transportation improvements, but we may get halfway through, or we may get a quarter way through, and they say, listen, you need to stop now until additional improvements consistent with the traffic impact analysis and the, and the requirements from VDOT are done. Again, I don't know, that answers the question regarding.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Gallagher? All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Ragsdale, if you wouldn't mind, could you read the conditions that staff has recommended?
If I can get it to come up. Would you like for me to read them word for word, or can I summarize?
You can summarize, but specifically, I think the, the concerns that were raised, condition number one, condition number, number five, or number four and five. One, four, five, and six, I think would, I think would answer some of the concerns that the, the good people... that the, the good people who have spoke, spoke out tonight.
So, condition one requires that prior to the first, the approval of the first subdivision plat, which would be required before any construction could start on the property, they would have to subdivide the property before any plans could be submitted to our office, including the erosion and sediment control plan. So the subdivision plat would really be their first step as starting the construction process as far as the county is concerned. Before the approval of the first subdivision plat, the applicant has to submit to the county a traffic impacts analysis. The county would then submit that to VDOT on behalf of the applicant. VDOT would have to approve that plan, and then the applicant would have to agree to install any, the analysis would have to identify any traffic issues associated with access from the property to the existing transportation network. It would have to outline solutions to potential problems and address the sufficiency of the future transportation network within a radius to be determined by VDOT in the vicinity of the project, and present improvements and anticipated timelines for improvements to be incorporated into the development of the property. All required permits have to be obtained by VDOT prior to construction. So the traffic impacts analysis would have to be approved, they would have to have a timeline to implement anything that was identified as needed in that plan, and then VDOT would have to issue permits for that and access to 58 and any other roadways that would be entered or impacted by the development prior to construction starting. And that is actually prior to stormwater and erosion and, erosion and sediment control permits being issued to, allowing land disturbance, because VDOT does have to approve any construction entrances as well. So that is not just the main entrances to the property, that would be any type of entrance to the property. Additionally, I mentioned erosion and sediment control, so prior to construction, they do have to submit an erosion and sediment control plan to the county. That is reviewed by the county. And then we issue a land disturbing permit after the Department of Environmental Quality has reviewed a stormwater prevention plan. So they have to submit both an erosion sediment control plan that looks at sediment control and containing sediment on site, and then they also have to submit a stormwater plan to the state, and the state is going to look at whether or not stormwater runoff is at or less than pre-development rates post-development. So they're going to ensure that there is not an increase in stormwater runoff from this project. Both of those plans have to be approved by the respective agency before we can issue a land disturbance permit, allowing any type of land disturbance to happen on that property for any phase. And then prior to construction, the applicant shall prepare and submit to the zoning administrator a construction management plan to address traffic control methods, site access, fencing, lighting, mitigation of construction operations, and hours of construction activity. And then that plan would have to be followed by the applicants to, to minimize impacts to adjacent property owners, if at all possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Ragsdale. I just wanted to make sure that all the commissioners have a full understanding of what the, what the conditions being, being placed on this motion are. Anybody else have any questions?
I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
We as a board do listen. I've talked to numerous people. Most people don't care. A lot of people are against it. More people have told me they are for it than against it. I've even had people to tell me that they want to purchase a house in this project. 58 will get an uptick in traffic when it's four-laned all the way through Love's Leap, so you're going to get an uptick anyhow. They have to, I've been involved with, with some other stuff, and they really going to have to jump through some hoops on the project I had. If his skeeters was in a mud hole, I'd stay 200 feet away from it. That was DEQ. So it's, it's going to be really controlled. Two people commented to me yesterday about, they didn't see why anybody would be against it. It was everything there that you could want in a community. And as far as the, the hotel being on 58, I got some figures here. The average of the late, the last eight years, the average from tourism in Danville is 96 and a half million, 25 million for Pennsylvania County, 20% of that came from hotels. Employment and tourism industry in Danville and Pennsylvania County is about 1,400 people per year. And so I have listened as this project is needed to complement Berry Hill Mega Park. And if we don't get some housing in the area, we're going to have industry looking the other way because we don't have housing. And it'd be a shame for people working here to have to live in RV park. So that's, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. At 8:12, public hearing is closed. Back over to you, Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, in case S-23-012, I make a motion, we issue a special use permit with the six conditions listed by staff.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Please cast your vote. Motion carries six yes, zero no. At 8:13, case S-23-015 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-23-015, Crown Castle has petition for a special use permit on 289.7 acres located on State Road 311, Berry Hill Road in the Westover Election District for the placement of a cell tower in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code Section 35-295. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Jonathan Yates is here to represent the petition.
Good evening, Mr. Yates.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the court. Last time I was here, we were up above the courthouse. This is a big room, I hope I can handle it. First and foremost, I have to really thank Ms. Robin, Ms. Emily. During the course of, I have two applications for you tonight, during the course of those applications, I asked about 100 stupid questions. You know, they never laughed at me? Now, they did threaten me with a restraining order if I asked that 100 first, so thank, thank the good Lord I didn't get there. We're going to talk about two towers tonight. The first one is for Crown Castle 06-2 LLC with Mr. Bryce Pickens and our property owner, Mr. Will Harriston. Has everyone left the room? Because I don't want to talk about the mega site till they do. This is a facility, it's what we call a self-support facility, it's 250 feet with lightning rod and one-foot foundation, 260 feet, and it is to bring wireless infrastructure to the mega site. We found, Bryce has worked on this for quite some time, the lead tenant will be AT&amp;T, they want to be preemptive. You know, part of the thing, and I know your community development folks will talk about this, when you're trying to attract the tenants to the mega site, which is important, they have a list they go through. You know, they look at schools, they look at road systems, they also look at wireless infrastructure. Will we have adequate infrastructure to the mega site? So AT&amp;T is trying to be preemptive, take the lead. Bryce went to work on this with Crown for AT&amp;T, and he found an incredible piece of property. Property is owned by Mr. Harriston and his family. Interesting piece of property because it's been in the family since the 1700s, loosely referred to as Oak Hill Farms. Will will argue with you, saying, "Why they calling this thing Berry Hill? That whole area is called Oak Hill." But incredible piece of property, 289 acres, zoned M1, southern border of it's actually the Dan River. And he is surrounded by just one other property owner. Oddly enough, the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Facility, Industrial Facility Authority. So Will was very gracious with us, allowing its placement. And to talk about the property, since the 1990s, Oak Hill Farms obviously has a long history in the county, but since the 1990s, it's been exclusively for raising loblolly pines. He was very generous with his placement there. We were able to go where AT&amp;T felt it important to, as the mega site develops out, they can make their coverage work. It is designed initially for AT&amp;T, but also for three additional broadband carriers, and with the hopes, as this part of the county develops with the mega site, that wireless infrastructure will be in place to accommodate them. You know, when I, and I'll make the same comment on the next site we're going to talk about. You know, I drive in and it's tough in my business because everyone's getting you on the phone all the time. If you're not back to them in five minutes, they think you don't like them or something happened to you. It's sometimes refreshing when I go to an area where my phone's not working too well. However, if I worked or lived in that area, that wouldn't be such a good thing. We're coming off an interesting time in the country, past couple of years with the pandemic, where a lot of folks had to work from home, trying to get those folks back to the office and then easily educate their children from home. And so while I joke about it having a quiet time, if you're operating a business or you're trying to live in an area without wireless infrastructure, it's not that funny. Wireless is people talking on the phone, there's people pulling up all kinds of things on the internet. But also importantly for wireless, it is the access to first responders. Immediate access to 911 with first responders, whether it be fire, police EMS, you can reach out to them, they can figure out where you are, you can talk to them during the contingency emergency. So wireless infrastructure is important for all of us. I'm here to any, answer any and all questions. Our landlord, Mr. Harriston and Mr. Pickens, we feel that we, after really belaboring these two wonderful ladies, we feel we meet all the requirements of the ordinance, and we figure it's a perfect site. We applaud AT&amp;T for being preemptive to make sure the infrastructure will be in place for the mega site. I'm here for any and all questions y'all might have.
Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Anybody here to speak for or against? At 8:19, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Webb.
As it relates to case number S-23-015, Crown Castle, I rec, move that we recommend approval to allow for construction of the new cell phone tower on State Road 311, Berry Hill Road.
Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Ms. Meese, thank you. Please cast your vote. The motion carries six yes, zero no. At 8:20, case S-23-016 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-23-016, Arcola Towers has petition for a special use permit on 120.31 acres located on State Road 865 Chalk Level Road in the Banister Election District for the placement of a cell tower in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code 35-179. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Jonathan Yates is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman Jonathan Yates, again, thank you so much. Again, thanks to Robin and Emily. This is a different facility in that, and we have a, again, so kudos, kudos to my property owner here, Mr. Tommy Motley, back there in the purple shirt, and Ryan Foltz of Arcola. They worked very hard to come up with a really incredible solution. In this case, this is for, the lead tenant will be Verizon Wireless. It's a different type of tower, it's what we call the monopole. It's 197 feet with a two-foot lightning rod. It is also designed not only for Verizon, but for the three additional broadband carriers, if they'd like to go on it. And again, Ryan and Tommy did a great job on the placement here. This is a piece of property that Tommy has, Tommy, if you, I keep calling him Tommy, but it's Motley Dairy, Inc., is actually the owner. And it's a 120-acre piece of property, zoned A1. Tommy bought it in, from the Shelton family in 2012, and its entire use is for raising corn to be used in his dairy operation. There's an old house on the property, but it, Tommy tells me, is beyond repair, so it'll be us and the corn operation. Tommy was very good to us in letting us achieve very good setbacks where we could place the facility where Verizon needed it and accommodate it on his operation to feed the cows at the dairy. So again, not to belabor it, this one, really more important, because I drove up there, and again, it was sort of quiet, but I saw a lot, you know, I saw folks living out there. And so, one thing I think about when I drive a county like Pennsylvania, why is it if I go through Loudon, Fairfax, and Rico County, my phone works everywhere? Why is it when I get to Pennsylvania and other counties in Southern Virginia, it doesn't work? Well, the time is now. The time is now for this infrastructure. It is important infrastructure, we are now considered the fourth utility, they call wireless, and there's no reason Pennsylvania, the residents of Pennsylvania shouldn't be able to use their phones like folks in the rest of the state. So that's the goal, again, here for any and all questions, but I, I applaud Ryan, who spent a long time with this project with the placement. I thank Tommy for offering his property, really a perfect location, the radio frequency engineers for Verizon is exactly where they wanted to be, and were able to accommodate it on 120-acre property devoted to the raising of corn to be fed to cows at a dairy three miles down the road. I know the hour is late, but I'm here for any and all questions, and again, thanks to these wonderful ladies.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, sir. I meant to ask you on the other tower, too, is both of these towers under the height that don't have to have a light on?
The second one, the, the, the one we're just talking about?
Yes, sir.
In the United States, it's generally 200, a 200-foot rule, so the first one will not have to have, excuse me, this one will not have to have lights, because it's coming at 197, 199. Now, the first one, and obviously, that's kind of carried the distance to the park, that is at 250 feet with a nine-foot lightning rod and one foundation, that will have air nav lighting. However, Crown Castle is devoted to doing it a little better, what we have is what's called the dual-mode lighting system. You'll have white during the day, red at dusk. It serves its purpose for the air nav feature, you know, you want to be careful, make sure the pilot can see it, but it doesn't have any, any effect on the ground. So the one at Berry Hill will have air nav lights, the one here on Chalk Level will not have air light. 200 feet and above is the demarcation, that's, that's the demarcation. Now, in both cases, both facilities were very sufficient distances from any airport. In one case, you were a distance from the Rockingham County, and the other, Danville Regional and BHS Aviation. So all that is good, but we will have air nav lighting on the Crown facility.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing I want to say to Mr. Yates.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing I want to say to Mr. Yates. I live at Sander Level, in the Callan's Grotten, the district, and we had that problem, the phones dropping, cell phone, cell phone, it was awful. But I think it's important for everybody to realize, these towers are community-friendly. I don't know of anybody that would oppose a tower, because just like you brought out, it's very important for first offenders, a rescue squad, when you're having a heart attack, and you cannot get 911, and you get dropped. So, I hope to see more in the county.
I hope so, too, and there are more in the way, and you brought up a good point, I'm, and I know it's late, but I'll be brief. When I was much younger, because you can tell I'm not very young, I was in a remote part of my home county, and a tire blew out on me. This was in 1978. The scariest thing I did was walking up to that farm door, to knock on the door so I could call my folks, not knowing if I was going to get my head blown off or ever be seen again.
Sure.
I have a son, he's got a phone, he gets in a jam, he calls 911, he calls me, he doesn't have to walk down that trail and knock on that door. So we can never underestimate access to first responders. I thank you, ma'am.
Welcome to our county.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Molly, did you have?
I was believing it was my wife.
Okay.
It is me.
Anybody else? All right, at 8:27, public hearing is closed. Let's see, this is, Ms. Anderson?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, in the case of S-23-016, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve this SUP to the BZO for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Henderson is our second.
My second.
Second by Ms. Mies. Please cast your vote. Motion carries six yes, zero no. At 8:28, case Z-23-001 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case Z-23-001, Atkinson's LLC has petitioned for a sign permit on 1.83 acres located on US Highway 29, in the Chadon Blair's Election District, for a 10-by-30 double-sided illuminated off-site advertisement sign, in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code Section 35-100. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Joanne Atkinson is here to represent the petition.
I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time to review this petition for this sign permit that will be installed on the property that I own, on US 29. If you have any questions at all.
Any questions?
I just have a comment, I love your building there.
Thank you. We really enjoy it.
It's beautiful.
Mine's not loading, are there any condition, any staff conditions placed on this?
No, this was actually approved previously, but they're only good for 18 months, so it expired. So she's, she's requesting the same thing that was requested previously, but no, there are no conditions placed on this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak to this case? At 8:29, public hearing is closed. This was Mr. Waters, I believe.
Well, for Mr. Waters, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Webb.
As it relates to case Z-23-001, I make a motion that we approve the permit for the off-site advertisement sign, the, basically renewal of the permit.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
My second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Please cast your vote.
How do you vote, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes, six yes, zero no. What else we got here? Old business.
So just a reminder that we will have our last bi-monthly zoning ordinance review next week, so Robin will be sending out the packet for that meeting, it is at 5:30 in this room. So, that will be coming from Robin in the next day or so. And we will have, well, that's all I have for old business.
All right. New business.
New business, we will have a meeting next month, you do have your case information in front of you, if you have any questions, feel free to let us know.
All right. Anybody have anything else? If not, at 8:00.